I have six thirty.
Good evening. I call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education, Monday, January 23, 2023 to order. Mr. Zink, would you call the roll?
Mr. D? Here. Ms. Bodie?
Present.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Board, we move to number two on the agenda, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Casper? Please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, we will move to number three on the agenda, the executive session. I am looking for a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. D. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Call the roll, please.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, we will recess to the downstairs conference room, and we will be back.
Call the meeting back to order. The board just met an executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Board will move to number four, opening items. Mr. Vogelmann, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under board president comments. I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Stevens. Mr. Scott Stevens is the director, the executive director of Reach Out Lakota. He's going to speak for just a moment about what Reach Out Lakota offers to our community.
Thank you, Linda. As she said, I'm Scott Stevens from Reach Out Lakota. We're the local food and clothing pantry. We've been serving Lakota School District for 30 years. And I came to present just to dispel some misinformation that's been floating around in the community. We provide food and clothing to families in need. In order to access our services, all families need to do is come on the days that we're open and provide photo IDs for all the adults in the household, a piece of mail for the adults in the household, and some sort of ID for the children in the household. And they can access food. We do like really large food orders, like a two to three week supply of food, four times a year. They can get fresh produce monthly and clothing monthly. And so we try to make it very accessible to the families who are in need. Occasionally, there's a crisis event, maybe a house fire. We're very flexible. We work with the liaisons to ensure that if a family has a crisis, they need something right away. We're very flexible, letting families access that information. So we're here to serve the community and, you know, we make it very easy for families to sign up and receive that service. We have a dedicated team of about 180 volunteers who, right now, are serving food at the pantry as we speak. And so I'm going to leave some brochures for folks who have any questions about it. But I just wanted to let people know that it's not very, it's not very hard to access service for those families in need in our community. Thank you.
Stay for just one moment. Thank you for the work that you do for our students and our families. We very much appreciate it. Board comments or questions? Anyone? Mr. Vogelmann, Mr. Zink?
Thank you for your longstanding partnership. I know whenever anybody asks me, that's where my clothes and small household items, not big household items and food go. And they've got a great shed out back where you can drop things off after hours, but just make sure that it's high quality items and not used. Sometimes it looks like people are using it to empty their storage cabinet of things that no one can use. So they appreciate that partnership with everyone and providing highly usable things for their families. So thank you for that.
And also, the, you didn't mention the, besides what you do on a daily basis, is your, what you do for the students, back to school backpacks, and then at Christmas time, we give, you give all of the students that qualify backpacks with all of their school supplies in it. They get to come in, they get to pick their backpacks out. I think I've done the last three years backpacks and Christmas gifts. And it's so fun to watch the kids come in and pick out their backpacks. Some of them take quite a long time to decide what color it is they would like. So, but it's, that is just one, you know, more thing. And the same thing with the Christmas toy drive, that parents come in and there's hundreds and hundreds of toys. And the parents literally get to shop for toys for their children. So thank you for that portion of what you do also.
You're welcome. Thank you for mentioning it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you for being part of the community and such a big support for those who need support. And I volunteered for the Thanksgiving dinners and the boxes. And you guys provide so much to the community and I'm thankful that they have a Reach Out for Lakota.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your services. We appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Say, as a, as a former building principal too, the opportunities you give our families in need, but also back when I was assistant principal of informing kids that needed community service hours, that they can come help and volunteer. So you, you give both sides of helping our student population of fulfilling some of those requirements to help out. And I think it's a good experience for them and then also to see children receiving need. So thank you.
Got a student right here tonight helping out, so yes.
Fantastic.
Just thank you for all your service.
Thank you for coming and talking with us.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Board, a couple of housekeeping items to let you know about. As most of you are aware, we have done the OSBA A to Z award, which is a board self-evaluation tool. That will be due in mid-February. And I am asking the board's opinion on whether or not we do that again this year. If so, I will send it out and we can make it a discussion at our February 6th meeting. Is there interest in doing so? I believe it's an effective tool that's helpful to us to understand areas where we might improve.
Okay. Perfect. I do not support anything that the OSBA would offer in that area or any area. So, I mean, I think we could do it without the OSBA. I think there are many programs out there that help boards evaluate themselves and it does not have to be part of the OSBA, especially if it's costing money. I would definitely say no.
So it's completely free. It's a self-evaluation tool that the board uses to just have some discussion about where we're at. So I will send it to the board and those that would like to participate, that'd be great. And if you'd send it back prior to that meeting, then I would be happy to collate that and have it ready for our meeting. Thank you very much. Also wanted to let the board know that our facilities meeting date, which is set for 5:30 on February 6th, our architects are not going to be ready with a presentation for that meeting. And so Mr. Passard has asked that we move that to a different date. And I will be sending out some alternatives about when the architects can have that ready. So if you would please be watching for your email, get back to me so that we can change that meeting date as quickly as possible. Any questions on that? All right. The final thing I wanted to let you know, Mr. Vogelmann and I were asked to attend today, the Lakota Leadership Academy, which is a program that we used to have in the district. I think it was 2012 to 2014. And those are voluntary for a cohort of our teachers and that would like to be interested in learning more of the leadership around the district and how to move into those positions. So we had a chance to tag team on some questions that they presented to us today. Did you want to say anything about that?
No, just, just an exciting time to be able to share leadership ideas and not necessarily being a building administrator. What does leadership look like? It's, there's various levels of leadership to help, whether coaching, club sponsor, tutoring. There's a lot of things that you can do to be a leader, serving as a building leadership team member. Just lots of things to talk about. And we'll do this once a month for the next four months, just opportunity to kind of talk about that. And when we did it back in 12 and 14, about 12 of those individuals are principals or central office administrators, either in Lakota or in another district. So we're hoping to grow our own pipeline, so to say, of showing people what opportunities we have here in Lakota, if they're interested in stepping up and taking on higher leadership opportunities.
Do you want to talk about our two staff members that are running that?
Yes, Lindsay Ellis and Michelle Workerson approached me back in October. They remembered being a part of it back in 12 and 14.
They did the first class, they said.
Back when Ron Spurlock was the one who was leading that. And they just thought, you know, it'd be nice to kind of get that back. We took some years off, just because you run it for so long, you start to run out of those people that are interested in leadership, just kind of runs its course. And so we had halted it, but now it's time to pick it up again and we'll see what happens.
I do want to say that Mr. Vogelmann called me a veteran board member at least 10 times during the session. So we'll have a discussion later, Mr. Vogelmann. They asked some great questions, so really appreciate it. Looks like we have good representation from across the district too. So that was very positive. Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Vogelmann on that? All right, we'll move on. We move to, we have no board action items tonight under agenda item five, correct, Mr. Zink? I'm sorry, I did. Superintendent comments? Beshers comments?
The only thing I have to say is I appreciate the board's trust in me on your vote the other night. I don't take it lightly. This is my home. This is where I've been for 26 years. I came when the new high schools opened back in 97. And I've been here ever since. And I would love to finish my career here in whatever capacity that looks like. And stepping up at this time, I feel is the right thing to do because I care about this community. I care about the staff we have. I care about the students, which of our mine own children. I have two that have graduated all the way through K through 12. I currently have a junior at East and I have a seventh grader at Liberty Junior. I don't want them to be anyplace else and I don't want to be anyplace else. I'm proud of the work that we do here. My two older kids went through, they got a diploma and they had access to do whatever they wanted to do in their life once they got that diploma. And they weren't narrowed in on selective, only certain things, but we gave them the education that allowed them to research what they like, where their passions are, and then to move forward into college and to start working on their careers and what they want to do. And that's, I credit their teachers that invested in them. And so that's why I'm here. Also wanted to say thank you to the five of you. You stepped up. Board appreciation month is January. Hasn't been easy for anybody lately. And I appreciate your service to the community and for sitting in the seats that you're in. Hopefully, we can move forward with some things and bring some calmness and get back to educating kids and just take away some of the high tension that's in the room at times. And so we can get back to doing the business you guys need to do, get back to educating kids. We're about 76 school days away from celebrating 600 and some kids walking across the stage and hopefully we can focus on that finish line and get there. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann. You know, given how long you've been here, I think it's fairly safe for me to call you veteran too.
Yes. The hair doesn't lie either.
We are very appreciative of you stepping up to the plate and taking on the leadership role in the way that you have. And Mr. Zink, thank you because you've had a lot to do behind the scenes with helping to make that happen too. So thank you to both of you. So board, we had a board statement and had an opportunity at the last meeting, just for a very brief piece, but I'd like everybody to have a chance, if they'd like to, to respond to anything from last week's meeting on an individual basis.
I have closing comments that I will be saying. Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Casper, Mr. D, anything?
Just that we appreciate you stepping up. And I know from my perspective that we are going to do everything that we possibly can to make sure that our students and our staff and our community and our parents get what they need from this board and from the superintendent, even if it's an interim basis. So I just want to thank Mr. Vogelmann. We are grateful for you to step up and we have the utmost faith and confidence in you. I've known Mr. Vogelmann a long time. He was my kid's principal. I was his PTA president at Liberty Junior. So, known him a very long time.
You might also be veteran.
Yes. Just not veteran up here. I'm veteran out there. So, so just, so just be careful because it's a slippery slope for a PTA president to hear. Just saying.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper, Mrs. Schaefer.
Again, last week I said I looked forward to watching you soar. And again, I look forward to all of us collectively continuing to work towards putting students, staff, continuing to work towards putting students, staff, community first. And I think we have lost our way at times and I look forward to making sure that every day is about how we can help prepare our children to be successful in their future and make this a great place to work for everyone. So that this is a community that people want to come to.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaffer.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Vogelmann. I know last year we had a lot of distractions and we have a lot of catch-up to do. So you have a big shoe to fill and I believe that you will do it. After hearing that student achievement is your goal, that is my goal as well. And I want to work with you and to make sure that we catch up and prepare our kids for their future. Thank you so much.
Just want to say congratulations, Rob. Look forward, look forward to having you up here and working with you on everything. So, thanks for stepping up and taking the position.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Zink. Any comments?
I just wanted to say happy Board Appreciation Month as well. It is very thankless work that the boards everywhere I've ever been can go through at times. So, thanks for your service. It doesn't go unnoticed. There's a lot of long nights going to this that nobody would really understand and probably wouldn't want to. So, thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Mr. Vogelmann and I got a question today about what, how do you handle not keeping everybody happy? And I said, well, you know, I learned a long time ago that if you're on the school board, probably if everybody's a little unhappy, you're doing a good job. So, appreciate your comments, Mr. Zink and Mr. Vogelmann. All right, we will move on to number five. There are no board action items at this time. And we'll move to number six, public comment. Last month, the board approved a revised public participation policy. The primary purpose for the revision to the policies was to ensure that we focus our collective time and our energy on educational issues in the district. We value public participation at our board meetings and we do look forward to hearing from you. As a reminder, the public participation guidelines that we follow are stated in the Lakota Local School District Board of Education Policy 0169.1. The board values public expression on our educational issues and also values an efficient and an orderly meeting. And therefore it will be governed by the following rules as outlined in our policies. For our speakers, tonight our speakers have registered to speak. Through a sign-in process prior to this meeting, participants are allowed to comment on the specific items on the published agenda for the meeting at which the participant registered their intent to speak. Participants may also comment in, in addition to the agenda on the following very specific topics. Child nutrition, communication, community relations, curriculum, facilities, finance, operations, programming, safety, school board, special education, student co and extracurriculars, technology and transportation. Participants are not allowed to raise compliments or complaints about Lakota local school employees during the public participation portion of the board meeting. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Each statement made by a participant is limited to three minutes. We have a timer up on our screen. We ask at that point that you see and go to yellow, please wrap your comments up so that when the screen goes red, you are complete. Each statement must be directed to the presiding officer and no person may address board members or question board members individually. Please be mindful of these guidelines. If they're violated, there'll be a warning and then we'll ask that you forfeit your time or move on to another topic. Please be respectful. And for our audience, a reminder to those in the audience, and we appreciate having a full house tonight. We really do. We ask that you respectfully listen to all points of view, just as we ask our students to at the microphone. Clapping, booing, profanity and commenting amongst yourself is distracting. It makes hearing our speakers very, very difficult and it takes away from the time allotted for public comment in our meetings. Displaying posters, written signs, objects or other written or electronic materials which may obstruct the view of other attendees, obstruct the video recording of the meeting, distract either the board or members of the audience, or otherwise interfere with the orderly progress of the board meeting is not permitted. If a lack of decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of our meeting, we may call for a recess or an adjournment to another day. As I explained, we all sincerely want to hear from you. But it's critical that there is public decorum that allows us to do so. Please respect the guidelines. I'll call the names of people that have signed up to speak tonight. I'll ask that you move to that side of the wall as your names are called so that you're ready to speak. And we can use our time effectively to hear from as many people as possible. So I'll ask for the first people to go ahead and stand up. Jamie Manier, Kristy Erdl, Julie Perina and Diane Hughes will start. Would you please? So again, 30 minutes allotted tonight for public participation and three minutes per speaker. Mrs. Manier, if you would wait until the timer starts. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Jamie Manier. I come tonight to speak to Linda, Isaac, Julie and Kelly. I have sent all of you emails over the last month and have never received a response from any of you, only Darby. So I'm here to talk tonight about a few topics. There's nothing political about this. If I were concerned with politics, I'd look the other way and hope this quiets down without having to do or say anything, which is exactly the politics you four have been involved in. Because of your lack of leadership and dismal performance handling the Matt Miller situation, I wanted you to fully understand what the community has observed these last six months. The agreement of having a superintendent who admitted to fantasizing, drugging and molesting children. Not one time.
Mrs. Manier.
Not one time did.
You cannot speak about personnel during this meeting. Please do not. Please move on to another topic.
Time did you acknowledge the outrage from the community which stemmed from his own words and his.
Mrs. Manier, you may not speak about personnel during this meeting. Please move to a different topic.
Doing, therefore nothing.
Mrs. Manier.
The board spoke about working with integrity, honesty and facts. Ignoring and looking the other way with facts right in front of you is a form of intentional dishonesty.
Audience.
You displayed zero ability to discern and prioritize this scandal and handle it the way it should have been handled from the beginning, removing Mr. Miller. At the same time, you were asking Darby to step down from.
Mrs. Manier, this is your second warning. Please do not speak about personnel particularly.
The board.
Audience.
The board has deep ties to Matt, making them unable to make the right and just decision. Frankly.
Mrs. Manier, I'm going to ask you to either cease talking about personnel or please, please move on to something else.
For truth and righteousness will win. In addition, you have tried to shut down public comments. You didn't like what was being said at the mic, so you've tried to stop it altogether. Like someone else mentioned at another meeting, who's deciding what's nice, good, offensive, bad? That is the essence of the First Amendment of the Constitution, which you all took an oath to uphold with your hands on the Bible. Your attempts to control speech are a violation of your oath and duty. It was mentioned that this is a business meeting with public comments, so you can put parameters on. But actually that's wrong. Please go back and read the Constitution so you better understand the people's rights. You are chosen by us and you work for us. You spend our money and educate our.
Mrs. Manier, your time is finished. Thank you.
We are in charge and thankfully.
Audience, I'm going to ask you, please. I understand you may be in disagreement, but it's very difficult to hear when that happens. Please. Mrs. Erdl, you'll be up. Mrs. Perino follows, Mrs. Hughes. And Mrs., Mrs. Gooden.
Can you reset the timer, please?
Mrs. Gooden follows.
Good evening, Kristy Erdl, Liberty Township. I wanted to start by publicly thanking Empower U and Michael Conaton for the plaque that they presented to the district at the last meeting. "In God We Trust" is a public declaration for this district over every building, every classroom. And I echo that declaration on behalf of myself and many in this community. I also want to revisit 2017 and 2020 when three of our current board members approved two contracts regarding our superintendent. Despite legal guidance, both contracts were approved without any particular clause related to professional boundaries or acceptable behavior for a superintendent, should things go awry. Total compensation for those two contracts far exceeded over a million dollars of taxpayer money with essentially no ability to fire him outside of criminal behavior. That terrible decision and legal guidance was fiscally irresponsible, dangerous and shows complete incompetence on your part. Since August, four of the five board members have attempted to silence concerned parents. The district continues to withhold public records. We have pending litigation in local, federal and the Ohio Supreme Court. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent in legal bills. You have deleted over 96 comments from the community thought exchange. Please do not utter the word transparency for the foreseeable future until you earn that trust back, if ever, with this community. With the exception of Darby, four of the five of you have defended, empathized, praised and empowered our superintendent and his disgusting extracurricular activities. You are mothers, fathers.
Mrs. Erdl.
Husbands and yet not.
You are discussing personnel and again, that is not allowed within our guidelines.
Of.
Please do not discuss personnel again.
I understand. Courage to publicly call his behavior for what it was. It is not normal behavior.
Mrs. Erdl.
And it is not acceptable. The ultimate irony of all of this is that the same shining star stated by our president just six weeks ago that you defended and praised throughout this mess essentially threw all of you under the bus and essentially ran you over in the interviews that he did on Friday. If the fear was not firing him from day one because you would be sued, well, how did that work out in the end? The more appropriate question is how much more financially will the negligence of this board cost the community and taxpayers? Collectively, it very much appears that this current board is distracted, out of touch and complicit. Narcissism and bullies blame others for incredibly poor decision-making. They accept no responsibility for their actions and this is exactly what our previous superintendent is doing. You are.
Mrs. Erdl, we've asked you not to discuss personnel.
To do what you should have done.
Please wrap your comments up.
I hope that you have learned a very important lesson. The outcry from this community is not a result of any particular board member, political party, and to insinuate otherwise is causing further insult to injury.
Your time is up, Mrs. Erdl. Please wrap it up. Thank you very much. Appreciate hearing from you.
Is to protect.
Mrs. Perino.
Will prevail.
Mrs. Perino follows.
Yeah, they're all about respect and all that.
Mrs. Perino, please address the board president. Mr. Zink. Please don't. Mr. Zink. All right, go ahead.
Julie Perino. It needs to be made clear that Darby did not sound. Is this thing on? Can we reset the time again and get a?
Hello? Audience, please be quiet.
All right, well.
Mrs. Perino, please go ahead.
15 seconds, so. It needs to be made clear that Darby did not sound the alarm on the perversions of her former, former superintendent.
Mrs. Perino, please do not discuss personnel. Until January 31st, he is still personnel. Please do not discuss personnel.
Specifically, the parents did. In October, I did not know a single person in this room besides my family. I became involved only after reading the transcripts for myself that I personally requested from Butler County Sheriff's Office. This whole situation has been a huge wake-up call. Darby, I want to thank you. Thank you for not backing down.
Audience.
I see you putting the facts above feelings. I see you putting the results above relationships. Thank you for standing your ground on truth, even when every other elected board member.
Mrs. Perino, would you please speak to the board chair and not to individual board members?
I have to admit that I did not vote for you if there were an election.
Mrs. Perino, would you please address the president and not the board member?
Thank you for holding true to conservative values and historically has made Lakota great.
Mrs.
Linda, what are you?
Would you please address the board president and not individual board members? Thank you.
What are you conserving? I know you said that you're a conservative, but you're not conservative. Conservatives believe God first and country second. It was, if God was first in your life, the scandals that have gone on here would have never happened because you would have had the morals to stand your ground. You would have never put our children and their safety above money and fear of lawsuits. If you had country second, you would have never limited free speech and sought to silence the parents by any means necessary. You have lied, manipulated and covered up every step of the way. You have rightfully earned the name of lying Linda in our community. This said.
Audience, let her speak.
The community still has major concerns about the board scandals that need to be answered for. Your corruption has led to mismanagement of our money with attorneys, settlement payouts and who knows what else. You failed to conduct contractual performance reviews on Matt Miller. Brody Conover, the school's attorney, verified on November 21st, the last review on file was from school year 2017 to 2018. How can you hold someone accountable that you're not even reviewing? You've lost the trust of many people in the community. And speaking of losing trust, I was shocked to find out that a hopeful junior kindergarten teacher, Jenny Jackson.
Mrs. Perino, please wrap up your comments.
Has been dating, has been dating Matt Miller since 2020.
Mrs. Perino.
And the board approved.
Mrs. Perino, your time is up.
No, you've cut me off.
Your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments. Audience, we are going to take a recess if we can't keep it under control. Please. I would agree. No one has.
Diane Hughes.
Mrs. Hughes, one moment, please.
Diane Hughes, my issues with you board started in September, four months ago. I was outraged when it was revealed by the Butler County Sheriff that Mr. Miller has sexual desires that do not align with the vast majority community and is further is willing to participate in fantasy.
Stop, put the volume for a moment and take a recess. Would you please stop our time right where it's at, Mr. Zink? Stop the clock.
Brought me before you in September.
We are recessing for five minutes. Yes, can we turn off the microphone, please? Thank you. Audience, we will come back in five minutes. Audience, please take your seats. Could we have it quiet, please? And please take your seats.
She's filming. Do we have, does she get permission to film? Just making sure it works.
Thank you very much. Before we continue, I do want to say that I believe First Amendment does protect speech. It does not, however, protect against defamation, so there are consequences or possible consequences. Thank you, folks. It does not. So we are going to protect the First Amendment to the best of our ability. But again, we ask that you follow our guidelines and please do not discuss personnel. You're welcome to discuss any other issue that you would like to, including the board. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. You may go ahead and speak. Just one moment, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, give me a couple of seconds when it's over because you just stopped me. I am still outraged that Mr. Miller is going to have any contact with children.
Mrs. Hughes, I would ask that again, you follow the guidelines that do not discuss personnel.
The Constitution.
He is still a personnel, that he is still a member of our personnel.
Says I can speak. I am outraged that you, board, have condoned his immoral behavior and you continue
Mrs. Hughes, I ask that you do not speak about personnel. You have many different options. You have many different options to discuss your concerns.
Receive concerned parents, grandparents, and community members by your ridiculous and unconstitutional rules, processes, media collusions, backdoor deals, and bogus attorney-client claims. You won't speak the truth, but I will. Mr. Miller's immoral choices, prideful behavior
Mrs. Hughes, again, I ask you not to speak about personnel. He is still a member of our personnel, of our staff until January thirty-first.
States, his choices, his desires, his
Mrs. Hughes, I again ask you to stop talking about personnel.
To the public. He wasn't the victim of his wife's perversions.
Mrs. Hughes, you are out of order.
He is not the victim of a school board member that was brave enough to speak the truth, nor is he the victim of the
Mrs. Hughes, you are out of order, speaking about personnel.
Sreeping what he has sown. As he departs
Mrs. Hughes, you are out of order.
He has nothing. Given that his problems are of his own doing, this community, you, the board, the attorneys, give you counsel, no one should
Mrs. Hughes.
Mr. Miller receive any benefits as he departs. No severance, no contract payouts, no
Mrs. Hughes.
trips or 401K
Could we please cut the microphone?
Any other dis
Mrs. Hughes, I have asked you to change the topic. Happy to hear you talk about anything else but our staff. Mrs. Hughes, please wrap up your comments. Please wrap up your comments.
Back to discuss with you how you have mismanaged our money.
Your time is up, Mrs. Hughes. Thank you very much. Audience. Please trust me that there are many thoughts and comments we would all like to express, but let's keep them to ourselves so we can hear from everybody. Mrs. Gooden is up next. Mr. McCall follows. Mr. Argo. Mrs. Luigie. Are those individuals here? Is Mr. McCall here? Sorry, I didn't see you. Mr. Argo and Mrs. Luigie. Go ahead.
Benjamin McCall, uh, there's been many, many references to community this year.
One moment, one moment, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's been many, many references to community this year for what community is, how they are served, whose community is represented. And I represent a few. The community of Lakota as a resident, as a parent, and equally important African-American and person of color. Many that are here today with kids and grandkids, past and present, who actually attended the district. A community that is roughly twenty-three percent of Butler County and thirty-four percent of the student population. A community that often does not feel included either by ignorance, for lack of representation, and other reasons. For this reason and many others, a number of parent advocacy groups were formed dating back to the two thousands, representing many student needs with black and brown needs among them. Here's some history. Efforts began for marginalized students in the community, but also in the classroom. Their needs were often not fully served by teachers and administrators at the time as part of the work of multiple parent groups. Uh, different plans were put in place, diversity inclusion plans were put in place. What resulted were programs for enrichment for students that were not a majority of this population, black, brown, and mixed kids that are treated differently and feel that difference in treatment. But these programs have and still do benefit all students because it's not just about one group. This is why history and context is extremely important. Without it, people who don't have it can forget or create distortion, especially from anyone who has never nor ever plans to have their kids attend Lakota schools. Fast forward to now, and it has been made abundantly clear from the campaigns of two board members and negative statements from some members of this community that they do not support the needs mentioned earlier. Paying any diversity work as evil, divisive, or racist. Speaking down to nationally-recognized student programs like Sparks, attacking activities that create spaces for belonging, not just for us, but for all of us. Again, many that worked on the enrichment efforts are, again, here today. We are here to remind those of you who don't have that history or refuse to acknowledge it that we will not support a dismantling of that work. Diversity work that came from requests from families, from community conversations, from many parents that recognize the need for the entire community, not just one. These groups represent activism that we all have as parents to advocate for the benefits of all students, no different than any other group that advocates for gifted kids, kids with disabilities, or others. There was then and even more now a need for inclusion efforts into the district. Reading, writing, and arithmetic is important and has never been stopped. Our kids are learning it. Yet when our kids come home that are, what are the things that they talk about most? What are the things they share? I doubt it's the science test. If you have a different view, I am open to discussion. I think any one of you that has met me knows this because that is how I learn. That is how we build bridges. We build bridges piece by piece by facing and walking them, not ignoring or dismissing them. And that is what diversity, equity, and inclusion is. It's not a boogeyman that some continuously attempt to sell you. So I thank you, and I'll be here all night.
Audience, please. Mr. Argo, Mrs. Luigie, Mrs. Durff follows.
My
One moment, Mr. Argo. Go ahead.
My name's Alex Argo. Uh, so there are lots of things that many people in this room don't agree on, I think. But I would hope that if we were to find some common ground, we would agree that we want the students of Lakota to be able to come to school and focus on learning, academic achievement, if you want to use those words. In order to be ready to learn, young brains need to be able to answer two questions in the affirmative. Am I safe? Am I loved? And you have, you can have the best teachers or books, the best technology, but if they are worried about where they're sleeping tonight or where their next meal is coming from, or if the mean school board lady who doesn't agree with your lifestyle is going to come into your classroom, it can be hard to learn. That end has become very obvious over the past year and especially these past few weeks that Mrs. Body has zero interest in bettering the district, students, or staff, only in advancing a fringe agenda. She also has no interest in cooperating with the rest of the board. You have given her multiple chances. You have centered her, asked her to resign. She has run she has run off multiple district administrators. Who knows how many teachers took early retirement because of her? Yet the behavior has only become emboldened. I personally think that she should be removed from all committees. If she wants to stay.
Audience.
Madam President.
Mr. Argo, could you hold her one moment, please? Mr. Zink, would you hold that?
At the, at the very beginning, you said
Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor.
Individually.
You do not have the floor.
When you're out of lines.
Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor. We have within our guidelines guidelines that school board members can be talked about.
Yeah.
It's very clear also within our guidelines that we ask you not to address school board members individually, not that you cannot discuss them.
You stated
Clearly, that goes with all of us.
Individually at the beginning of this.
Mrs. Bodie, you are out of order. Miss. Let's just keep it moving, all right, Mr. Argo?
Yet the behavior has only become emboldened. I personally think she should be removed from all committees. If she wants to stay up to date on the policy committee or the DEI committee or master facilities, she should have to come watch from the audience and stop her disruptions. None of these committees were full board committees until the last set of board members. I also hope the visitation policy can be revisited at the next policy meeting. Mrs. Body is clearly going on visits, even with escorts, under false pretenses to
Excuse me again, Mr. Argo. If our SRO could please quiet the audience down in the back so that we can hear our speakers, I would really appreciate that. Please continue.
My son's class was visited a few weeks ago and, well, just hear Ms. Body speak about visits in school for herself.
We shine a light on what they're doing by invading their space and by showing up, they will quit on their own. And I have seen it work myself, that spontaneous and candid access to the halls and classrooms is the answer. The powerful antidote, and it works.
Mr. Argo, I need to ask you to wrap up.
This can't continue to happen. Mrs. Body has constantly said that she is the voice of the majority of the community. Well, Mrs. Body does not speak for me, and she also doesn't speak for almost three thousand other registered voters who have signed with verified wet signatures, not an online form, in our community to remove her. If you would like to find out how to join myself and others, please visit www remoebody.com.
I'd ask you to wrap up, please. Thank you. Before our next speaker starts, again, I want to state, school board members are a topic allowed for discussion. You may have been listening and heard myself being discussed. I didn't gavel that either.
Hold on.
Individual board members should not be addressed. Please address it to the chair. We will shut down comment completely if we need to or if we can't have to quorum in the room. Mrs. Luigie, you are, Luigie, you are up next. Mrs. Durff follows, and Regina McCall will be up after that. How much time is left? Okay. Please go ahead.
My name is Alyssa, is Alyssa Luigie. I'd like to make two points tonight. I would like to speak about the importance of programs that promote student belonging, namely, programs and efforts in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I just recently finished Dr. Brené Brown's newest book, and she had a section on belonging as it relates to DEI that really impacted me. She starts by explaining that love and belonging are irreducible needs for all people. She then expands on belonging, some descriptions which come from middle school students, actually. Things like, if I get to be me, I belong. If I have to be like you, I fit in. And belonging is somewhere where you want to, where you want to be and they want you. Fitting in is somewhere you want to be, but they don't care one way or the other. Man, that's a kicker, isn't it? The reality is DEI efforts at Lakota address students and staff's fundamental need to belong. In Dr. Brown's organization, they actually referred to DEIB, adding belonging. Belonging is experienced as a feeling of being accepted, included, respected, and contributing to a setting or anticipating the likelihood of developing this feeling. In an organizational setting, how is this possible if those involved in a process or decision or program have predominantly similar backgrounds, experiences, and cultures? Diversity makes us stronger because it makes the margins smaller. It expands who belongs. But perhaps that's really the heart of the issue, isn't it? Do you want to restrict the number of people at the table so there is more room for you to spread out and get comfortable? Or are you willing to tuck in your elbows and pull up seats for those who have been sitting around the edges of the room? My second request is I would like to formally request that Mrs. Body be stripped of all appointments to board committees. She has violated multiple sections of the Code of Ethics and Code of Conduct for board members in policy zero, one, two, three, items A, D, E, F, H, K, P, Q, and S. Of these items, I'll highlight item D, which says, recognize that board members have no authority to speak or act for the board. And item P, express personal opinions, but once the board has acted, accept the will of the majority. I respectfully ask the president of the board to remove her from all committees until her willful violations cease. For committees made up of the entire board, um, committees made up of the entire board appear to be at the discretion of the president and/or tradition or precedence and not per the actual organization bylaws.
Thank you, Mrs. Durff. Mrs. McCall follows, and Mrs. Fair.
Can I start? So
Of course.
I had something prepared, but that changed. In listening to everybody and the two vast differences between what everyone has said, I asked myself, sitting back there, is this our community and this, is this who we are? Is this who we want to be or this is what we're accepting? We're letting a small majority, a small minority of people determine the future of a very, very large district. We're letting a small percentage of those who speak louder appear to be bigger. They are not. This community is made up to twenty, but between twenty-five and thirty percent of a very diverse community from different backgrounds, cultures, beliefs, colors, genders. And that is what this community is. The chaos that's being caused by one person is what we're allowing to be happen. I look online and I see the large number of people online that have comments, all the Facebook pages. There are thousands of members based on the size of this district. While I see that they have a presence, I ask everyone, and I'm putting this out to the community, is this who we are? Do, I'm busy. A lot of people here are busy. We have a lot of things we want for our community. If we want that, we have to get out there and take it. Because sitting back and thinking this is just going to pass is not going to help the situation. If we let this continue to happen and we want to go on with our normal lives like nothing's going on in this district as one person wants, there will be no participation in sports. Our kids will have no scholarships. We will have no championships. We will go nowhere. There will be no Black History Month, no Cultural Month, no MLK Day, no Spanish Club. Because if you look at the board we have, Because if you look at the board we have, the people, there are some people here who have realized we are a community, and that means participating in those activities. That means being a part of those activities, and not participating in those is a choice. You recommend, you guys represent the community, not one opinion, not one agenda, not one person, not one culture, not one color. And if you can't be a part of everybody, the question is, why are you here? And is this our community, or is this what we're allowing our community to become? For anybody listening, anybody here, we can come here one day in the masses, but we need to show up all the time in masses. We need to show up to support. We need to show up to be here because we are for our kids and this district, not for one person's agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. McCall. Mrs. Durf, you're up. Mrs. Durf.
Yes.
I missed, yes, hold on one. Mrs. Durf, I believe I called your name several times. How much time is left? Okay. We have 1:25 left during a public comment, please go ahead.
Um, I just want to say that I've seen the amount of money that came from taxpayers to defend Matt Miller's investigation. Lawyers were paid.
Mrs. Durf, we are not going to discuss personnel issues.
Protect his image.
Mrs. Durf.
Who has pillow talk.
Mrs. Durf. I would ask you not to discuss personnel issues.
Where a lot of taxpayer dollars spent, but the board spent a lot of time trying to protect him. And what does he do? He throws you all right onto the bus.
Mrs. Durf, I'd ask you to discuss something other than a personnel issue, please.
He has accused Darby of conspiring against him, putting up, putting up someone to break into his home and endanger his family, along with destroying his career, all lies. It's laughable.
Mrs. Durf.
A man who brought all these on himself.
Mrs. Durf.
And then refuses to take responsibility for his actions.
Mrs. Durf.
Darby didn't bring the accusations that led the investigation or the consequences there.
Mrs. Durf, do you have anything else beyond personnel issues to say?
The public.
Mrs. Durf.
To put up with his.
Besides personnel.
You plotted to censor the public from speaking and canceling meetings to protect this man.
Mrs. Durf.
Until the.
Your public comment is over. Thank you.
30 minutes.
We need, we have to be fair and stop the comments where we stop them. So that was 30 minutes. Thank you all for your comments. Sorry, Mrs. Fair, I know I had called your name, I apologize that you won't be able to speak. Thank you all for your comments tonight. We'll move on.
And with that, I get to do.
Mrs. Schaefer. Number seven, board updates Butler Tech. When you're ready. I'm not timing you.
No. Um. All right. Um.
Hold your mic in.
What's up?
Hold your mic in.
So we had our first meeting of the Butler Board of Education. We did not make any changes to officers or assignments. Um, we do have two new board members for Ross and Middletown, and so we look forward to serving with them. We will be joining the Ohio AC Association of Career Technical Education Seminar in Columbus on February 8th and 9th to meet with our local representatives with some changes up at the state where.
Just a moment, please.
Hello, testing.
Mr. Wesley.
Much closer.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um. So we also have a trip to DC planned for March. Part of the effort there will be making sure that Perkins funding still continues because it's our understanding that there is some discussion of cutting Perkins funding, and that would impact adult education. We're currently working still on the facility in Middletown and Hamilton. There is an ask of the representatives, the two townships or cities of Middletown and Hamilton to contribute to that effort, which will be a co-location of businesses, secondary education, primary education. I think I caught everybody. Let's see, programming pathways, there are some changes to the programming pathways. There will be a new green engineering program this year that will replace the agriculture program. Um, and it's basically a combination of ag and engineering. There's also a new early business and IT pathway. This is going to be done in conjunction with Cincinnati State. When kids graduate, they should have 36 credit hours. Uh, and that's going to be 25 of the 125 10th grade students that start at Butler Tech. There's also going to be a junior business pathway that's also with Cincinnati State that will have 24 credit hours. There also is availability for students to get a Be Great Scholarship, where they can get $3,000 of scholarship money to work with Sinclair or Cincinnati State. So basically, if they're taking these classes at Butler Tech, and then after they leave Butler Tech with this $3,000 scholarship, students should be able to leave with an associate's degree. Uh, Lakota is replacing its digital media class because it competes with the cyber, and there's some overlap, and we're replacing it. With, now I'm gonna, I don't think I took a good note on what we're replacing it with. So I'll have to get back to you on that, I apologize. Monroe and Fairfield are adding financial literacy courses. And I think that's it for today. So.
Any questions for Mrs. Schaefer? Hearing none, thank you.
Thanks.
This is Casper, community engagement.
We, um, sorry, lost my train of thought. We had, um, community conversations last week with our junior high students, so that was fun. We asked them what they wanted to see in their, what they wanted to see in their future, what they, what some things they enjoyed about their, how the way their education works now, and as we go group forward with master facility plan, what they would like to see in like new buildings. Um, they're very, very insightful, um, very honest. The one thing that I took away that was amazing to me, and we heard the same thing from the high schoolers, is they want more pencil and paper. They, they want more, more worksheets. They, they want to be able to do worksheets and not have everything on the computer.
They actually said, get us out of our Chromebooks.
They said, get us out of our Chromebooks. They, they want more packets. So, but they were very honest, and they're very, very insightful, and they want, um, you know, they had some great ideas, and they're seventh and eighth graders, and so they, they don't understand the concept of how some of the things may not fit into their schedules, but they all had some really great ideas. So it's always fun, we were at, we were here, and Liberty Junior. So I think last year we did the other two junior highs. So we haven't done the junior highs in a couple of years, so that was fun. We have a community conversation tomorrow night on finance. Mr. Zink's first community conversation on finance, so please come, he will be so excited. So that's 6:30 to 8:00 here at Plains. We, um, have a strategic plan, community conversation to start talking about our strategic plan, and it is Thursday, February 23rd, 6:30 to 8:00 also. That location is to be determined because there was something going on in this building that we could not have here. We have not had any DPC or Presidents Council meetings since our last meeting. That's all I have.
And that strategic plan, there'll be, um, a conversation with both our community and with our staff.
The staff will, yeah, I didn't, the staff will be the day before, 3:30 and 5:00.
I think that was it. Any questions on community engagement or any further comments, Mr. Vogelmann?
No, not this time.
Finance, Mrs. Bodie, Mrs. Schaefer, choose to start, Mrs. Schaefer.
We had our first meeting of the finance committee. We talked a lot about what we hope to accomplish and how Adam wanted that to be an opportunity to go into more depth on any questions that maybe had on finances, so that we could be a resource and have that information upfront. But we didn't get into a lot of detail at the, this point, it was more setting the stage for the work that is to be done. I would say we had a great productive, productive meeting, and I look forward to the year. Um, I particularly like the direction we are going with transparency and what we can make more available to the community so that they can be more comfortable and knowledgeable about the finances.
Thank you both for your time.
Any questions on finance? Hearing none, we'll move to legislative. Mr. Zink, Mr. Vogelmann. Mrs. Casper. I almost said Mr. D.
I, one thing that, uh, I started trying to, uh, understand a little better is taking a look at the K-12 governance overhaul that's currently, uh, out there to, moving that to the governor's cabinet. Uh, looks like, um, you know, the hearings are going on right now. Um, and to start the next hearing will be Tuesday, February 7th. Further hearings are likely, uh, through February and probably all the way into the month of March. So that's one that we'll, we'll be kind of taking a look and see how, uh, how they plan to continue governance of K-12.
Also keeping an eye on Senate Bill 11, it's the Parental Education Freedom Act. This is an eligibility to expand the Ed Choice Scholarship, so we'll keep an eye on that for the impact it would have for Lakota. Uh, also, there is Senate Bill 2, the Neighborhood Development Areas. This is a potential for a 75% property tax exemption for a 10-year period to kind of, um, develop housing areas and communities if a township would take advantage. So we'll keep an eye on these and see if any of this applied us in the future.
Mrs. Casper, anything? All right. It's all right, you are on that committee though. All right, we'll move to number eight, Treasures Recommendations Action Items. This will be to approve the minutes for the special meeting, which was a board retreat on January 6th, the organizational meeting on January 9th, as well as the regular board meeting on January 9th, and the special meeting that was just held last week on January 19th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board, we'll move to number nine, Superintendent Recommendations Action Items to Approve Personnel Items to Approve a MOU with the Butler County Sheriff's Department for SRO Program and Donations, to Accept Donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper, the chair will second. Is there discussion?
Can we pull out number B? I just, I've had some questions that I haven't, um, this was not discussed in the finance committee, and there is still some information that I need to understand what is really going on with that.
We'll separate that out. So board will be voting on A and C, approve personnel items and donations. Any further discussion?
I would like to motion that, um, number B is postponed till our next board meeting, so I have more time to.
So we're in, we're voting right now on A and C, and then we'll come back to your point, all right? Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll for A and C.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Board, we are looking at a separate vote on B, the MOU with the Butler County Sheriff's Department. I'll take a separate motion for that one, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Casper, is there discussion?
Madam President, I would like to motion that we withhold the vote till the next meeting, so I can understand what we are voting on and, um, the rationale of this action. It was, again, it was not in the finance, uh, meeting discussed, and so I support the Butler, the Butler County Sheriff's Department. However, I just need to understand the rationale behind this action. We did discuss this in safety. We did.
We did discuss this in safety. Do you recall that discussion?
We had it in the safety.
In the safety committee?
We had it.
Mrs. Durzink speaks.
Mr. Zink.
Did you have your next one?
Yeah, just from my understanding is that, um, this, this was a change for all Butler County schools, that they changed their rate, uh, based on any school in Butler County that's using, uh, Butler County Sheriff's Office SROs, and it's a change to their hourly rate, uh, with their, with their, uh, union, with the police union.
Yeah, and it was also mentioned that they were having problems finding SROs, as well as retention of the SROs. So estimated, uh, right around 50,000 increase for us through the rest of the year, for all of our buildings and SROs.
There had not been a change in several years, is my understanding, of the rate.
Correct.
So Mrs. Bodie has asked to postpone this vote, is there a second to that? Hearing none, is there further discussion?
I think we, we discussed this before. We reviewed this, including the, the in, the increase, and all questions were answered.
Anything further?
To be fair, I, I do not remember that conversation, and again, I still need to understand the rationale behind this, I think I need to do some more investigating. And I would be more comfortable if we could postpone it till next meeting, I don't see what the issue is.
So Mrs. Bodie, I don't hear, I don't hear support for postponing it. However, you're welcome to ask any further questions that are appropriate to be asked in open session.
I need to do more research to make an educated vote. But we.
You're welcome, please. Go ahead.
I would assume that our treasurer and our assistant superintendent and our biz ops person have done the investigation for the MOU, which is their job.
Are you making a recommendation to approve this amendment?
Yes, because it's, it's all Butler County schools, Butler County schools are, have been presented with the same MOU change on the hourly rate.
Thank you.
So it's amendment to the contract, not the amendment Mrs. Bodie was talking about. Is there further discussion, anything else, Mr. Zink, Mr. Vogelmann?
No, I don't think so at this time.
No.
Mr. D.
No.
Any further questions you'd like to ask?
No, I stand by what I said, I would like to postpone the vote.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the MOU with the Butler County Sheriff's Department, I have a motion and a second. Without further discussion, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Same.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board will move to closing comments, Mrs. Bodie, we'll start with you.
All right, I'd appreciate it if you would keep the crowd under control and, uh.
It is time to move forward. We knew Matt Miller was a problem the, the day he refused to define critical race theory after saying it did not exist in the schools. As much as he needs to be dealt with because of what he has done and is still doing that directly affects Lakota, it is what is being taught and what is not being taught to our children that was and still is the problem in my first priority. It is the Board of Education that is charged by the state with the authority to manage all things in the district. The authority is supposed to be used by the board to institute accountability in the administration, and ultimately the faculty, in order to deliver a quality education. This is clearly not happening. Mr. Miller may no longer be superintendent, but the same people that Mr. Miller rightfully points out supported and covered for him are still in the schools and on this board. The majority of our board had no problem keeping Mr. Miller in charge of our children with full knowledge of his sexual tendencies, and they just didn't keep him a superintendent, they celebrated him. This was and still is a powerful message to our administrators and faculty who are subordinate. Additionally, no less than 5,000 members of the same teachers' union that are teachers here at Lakota belong to and support financially pledge to continue teaching critical race theory, even if it is made illegal. We have many great teachers in Lakota, but no profession is above reproach. The institution of teaching is in trouble, and good teachers are being marginalized and shut down as a result of institutionalized political pressure. They need help.
Audience.
The National Education Association spends more on political activities than on their members, and 97% of their support goes to the political left. Their priorities, as evident in, evidence in their annual meetings, continue to be centered around the indoctrination of our children through the supportive programs developed around the ideology of CRT. This theory or philosophy as defined by its creators is simply the prioritization of race to the first denominator in pretty much all things. Race answers all questions, and race will solve all problems. This is straight up racism. It divides our children and destroys their self-esteem, we must get rid of it. There was an undercover expose done exposing the kind of under. There was an undercover expose done exposing the kind of underhanded and deceitful tactics that are used by administrators and teachers to advance these racist programs. It incorporates footage that is candid and is in the words of teachers and administrators, so you can see yourself. It aired Friday, January 20th, 2023, on Fox's Jesse Waters Show, but it is also
Audience, please.
On my Facebook page and website at bodiforlakota.com. I suggest everyone take a good look at it because it is exactly what I've witnessed firsthand at Lakota, and exactly as far as I'm concerned, why I've been barred from going into the schools. Thank you.
Audience, please. Mrs. Schaefer.
There's so much to say tonight. It's hard to know where to begin. Um. Again, our mission statement, everything we do is designed to provide a future-ready, student-centered learning experience for every single child. That is what we as board members are charged to do. You may not agree with different things with our prior superintendent, but that was his goal as well. We were providing a future-ready, student-centered learning experience for every single child. We will continue.
Audience.
I will continue to fight for that. I will continue to look at the portrait of a graduate to do what is right, to make our kids ready for the future. When I hear people come to the mic and they're focused about the past, they're focused about everything but making this district succeed. I will not sit idly by while we allow people to destroy this district. It is not the objective of one person, and one person is not going to be able to do that. But we have to work together to make sure we put these kids first for their future. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion has become the boogeyman for everybody, and I'm not sure why and what those words have like created this bigger-than-life thing. I don't understand why we can't celebrate diversity. We got a note today from a parent talking about a Forbes article about that the Boston Consulting Group did a study and diversity efforts within corporations increased the bottom line. And quote, "Increasing the diversity of leadership teams leads to more and better innovation and improved financial performance." This was a study that was done of 1,700 companies across eight different countries. The bottom line, companies that have diverse management teams have 19% higher revenue due to innovation. So again, this, these are the companies hopefully our students are going to go work for. They have diversity efforts. They recognize that different thoughts actually benefit people. And even here at this table in the past, we've had diversity of thought, and it's actually benefited our students because we think of things differently, but it's not about tearing them down. Then you go to equity. Again, I brought visual aids today. This is a graphic that I think is so incredibly powerful. It shows if you give everybody the same box and there's a wall and they're different heights, some can see over and some can't. And if you make it equitable, some people are going to get bigger boxes because that's what they need. Some will have a medium box and some will have no box because that's what they need to succeed. Why can't we focus on giving every student what they need to succeed? I don't, I, again, don't understand. Then we go to inclusion, and this, I want you to marry him Webster definition because, you know, it's like we're going to argue about what it means. The act of including, the state of being included. Something that's included such as a gaseous, gaseous liquid or solid foreign body included in a mass. The act of or practice of including students with disabilities with the general population or the act or practice of including and accommodating people who have historically been excluded. Again, what is wrong with that? It's not this, we're teaching our white children that they're oppressors and our black children that they're oppressed, and nobody's ever going to succeed. It's giving everyone the tools they need to succeed in life, and I will never understand how that has become a bad thing. My white son is not being taught that he's an oppressor. My white son is not being taught he can't succeed because he's a horrible human. He's being taught that he has a lot of people who are around him who all hopefully can succeed and be successful in life and productive citizens in the future.
Audience, please.
I, we have to get back to focusing on kids and not allowing the success of destroying this district. We have to do the work. And I'll get off my soapbox now.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mrs. Casper.
Well, sorry. That's going to be hard to follow. Um, a, a couple of things. I agree with everything that Ms. Schaefer said, shockingly, but I have been saying, sitting at this seat forever, I don't understand why diversity is a bad word. Again, why is it that we're trying to give every child what they need to succeed? Every child and some children need different things, and it's ridiculous that people can't see that. So I don't understand either. Um, I would like to say that we've had a diversity department in this district for many years. Matt Miller was not the face of the diversity department. We've had a diversity department for 2013-ish before that. So it's been a long time. This is not something that just popped up all of a sudden. So I want everybody to know that. Um, I'm appalled, appalled, appalled that people come to the mic and scream and yell and talk about things they know they shouldn't. And when they get gavel to shut down, they just keep talking and yelling and calling people names. It's appalling that people would act that way. I, I, it, grown adults, it's just so funny to me that that's like, it's like a pendulum at two-year-old not getting what they want. So that, we've got to do better. Everybody has got to do better. You can't just stand up there and scream. It's crazy. Um, I would like to clear up something as I've seen on social media, which you know that's where all the true information is, that during our session on PD, our PD Board Development, which was a five-hour session, it was pointed out on many, many Facebook forums that they took a small clip of something that I said in a five-hour session, and what I said was, as we were talking about something, and I don't even remember what it was. I believe it was about the Zooming any longer. And what I wanted to say was that we are not, not trying to be transparent, but what I skipped a word and came out that we were not trying to be transparent. So of course, everybody took that clip and put it all over Facebook, and we got an email from a community member saying that that was why the public records requests were being denied. So I would like to go on record and say that I just skipped one little word. Keep in mind, five hours, and if anybody watched that session, you know that it was not all productive. So for those of you that are out there looking for every little clip it and every little misword that we can possibly say and blasting on social media, I just wanted to clear that up. Um. Mr. Vogelmann, thank you again. Please don't change your mind.
O'Connor? Go on, but.
Well, while you're laughing, I just wanted to say real fast.
You do not have the floor, Mrs. Bodie.
Can you mean replace?
Mrs. Bodie, you are out of order. You know, those double negatives get you every time, don't they?
I know.
Mrs. Casper. Mrs. Vogel, Mr. Vogelmann, we'll start with you.
Well. This is my home. Here, I want to help. Um, I'll do the best I can. I'm committed to all kids, all families. Um, this is my home. I've been here a long time. This saddens me. I, I don't even know how to respond at times. Um, I hope our kids don't watch and think that this is a way to behave either way, no matter what your views are, opinions. There's got to be a way that we can respectfully disagree on some things. Um. It's just, it, it's not easy. But like I said in the beginning, hopefully we can calm things down and get to a point where we can just focus on that graduation day and focus on getting kids their diplomas so then they can go do what they want to do. Um, a couple of things I do have written down here is, um, these kids probably know, snow day reminders. If you're watching the forecast, I know, Tuesday night into Wednesday morning, right? You're looking three inches, five inches, four inches, ooh, could be late, could be early. Just a reminder, uh, go to trusted sources of information, okay? Just, um, kids are pretty good at Photoshop, so just be careful. I'm not, I'm not trying to be fun, being serious. And just so you know, Mr. Sarge and his team, they, they always start early. So I know that Wednesday morning, they'll be up by four o'clock. They'll be heading out to all areas of the district to kind of see what's going on. Uh, we will enlist reports from the Butler County Sheriff's Office, Westchester Police Department, Westchester and Liberty Townships, and Butler County Superintendents. We'll all talk. We'll see what's going on. We'll see what the forecast says before we just automatic decide something on a whim. A lot of time goes into it, and then once a recommendation is made and we kind of see what everybody's doing, then that's when Mrs. Fuller goes into action on her side, and that's when everyone gets the uh, anticipated phone call from Mr. Sarge telling us if we are on a delay or if we're going to have the day off. So timing is tricky. As you know, yesterday's dusting we were supposed to have came at an interesting time, and a lot of stuff ended up being closed. I appreciate our community's patience and understanding why we closed our facilities yesterday so we could clear our lot, so we could have school today. And I hope you understand, that's always our priority on the weekend so that we can get our kids into school. Um, and as you know, cars through parking lots with refreeze can cause problems that weren't intended and end up, uh, cause a cancellation of school when not necessary. And also as a reminder, when we do have cancellations of school, typically we cancel all activities K-8. Uh, but our 912 schools, we don't necessarily cancel evening activities. So if you think it's automatically canceled, that's not true. We usually wait until the afternoon to make adjustments. For example, this Wednesday, East West Girls Basketball Game, that's a tough one to reschedule this late in the season. And so we always give our 912 a little bit of flexibility to say, let's wait and see what happens with the weather. Because as we know here in Ohio, sometimes it can snow in the morning and then be 50 in the afternoon. And so we will always wait to do high school events, and so we'll keep you updated on that. So 912 is a little different than that. And also, we know Wednesday night, there is a registration showcase at East Freshmen for incoming ninth graders. We'd hate to try and reschedule that. So we'll just try and keep those high school events going. Um, the other thing is I would, it's, I got it written down here, is just talking about morale boosters. As I go around to, um, to my, to my principals, always talk about January, you go to work, it's cold and dark. Uh, it doesn't matter. It's always gray. February, same thing. You go to work, it's dark. You go home, it's dark. And there's nothing to do. You go in your house, you close the door, you repeat, rinse and do that. It kind of gets you down a little bit. And so look for opportunities to be positive, to, um, get some verbal rays of sunshine going to keep you going. Because let's face it, once March hit, sun comes out, you can do more stuff afterwards. Seems to change everybody's atmosphere, attitude. And so I'm hoping that we can, uh, we can keep working through these days ahead, help each other out, both students, parents, and employees, and keep our eyes on that May 17th and May 19th day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann. Mr. Zink.
Well, definitely a lot to unpack tonight. This has been a very eventful meeting. I want to take a, a moment to thank the Treasurers' Office staff for everything that they've been doing to kind of keep the office running as well as it possibly can. While we've been pulled in different directions, so thank you for that. Also, thank the executive team for the work that they've been doing. Uh, thanks for coming tonight as well. So again, the Board Appreciation Month. Thanks for all you guys do. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thankless work a lot, a lot of the time. Uh, Community Conversation tomorrow at 6:30. I'm hoping that tomorrow is the day that I get the time to put my presentation together. We're such an exciting topic, so hopefully I can see some people there tomorrow. If not, then that's okay too, so.
You're just trying to get out of a big audience.
I would prefer a small audience if at all possible. Definitely do not.
Listen to them, folks. Don't listen to them.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. D.
Thank you so much. Um. I'm going to say some things, and please pay attention to get it right. I came to this board with a goal. My goal was and is to focus on educating our kids and giving them bright future. It is my responsibility to do what is right and to make sure that every kid have a future. I didn't come to satisfy any individual, but to satisfy the community. I didn't come to fund some people's emotions or lie to make some people happy. Last year, we had a lot of destruction from day one. We've been distracted several times all the way to the end of the year. I will speak for myself. I'm a man of faith. I believe in truth. And if you have any allegation, give me evidence. I am, I am, from, I'm an immigrant, and the thing I love about this country is you're innocent until proven guilty. And you are always given opportunity. If you're, if you have allegation against anybody, you're given opportunity to bring your evidence and to bring your proof. And it is the judge that decides who is guilty or who is innocent. An opportunity is given to you to bring your evidence. I know, uh, sometimes he may, we understand this. By the way, I'm against CRT. If there's CRT in this school district, I will fight it to the end. I have pleaded time without number before I run for school board. I have my own definition of CRT, so please. If you have evidence, show me the beef. That's one advertisement I know, long time ago, Wendy's. Show me the beef. Show me the evidence. I will run with it. I remember we had a situation where there was a allegation, I mean, allegation of a website, pornography website in our school district. I did today, I'm still asking, where is that website? If it is in this school district, show us that website. I've not seen it. We've had so many allegations thrown at accusation here and there. I want to see evidence. If there's not evidence, anybody can say whatever they like. That would never change this man sitting right here. You can say whatever you like. I had a bad, throughout the year, so much things thrown at me or accusations, emails, texts, asking me questions. I will still stick to it. Show me your evidence. It's time for us to stay focused on educating our kids. If you have anything else and you don't have evidence, please be quiet. Because you'll be distracting us from doing what we are supposed to be doing as board members. I salute you all for being, running, and being on the board for so many years. I don't know how you did it. I don't know how you did it. I, I, maybe it wasn't like this, but this is me. What you see is what you get, the truth. I would never, I know I'm going to stand before God and I'm going to give a cow. So if anybody thinks they can come and use me, they are lying. It will never happen. Some say, well, write for you. You come out, just go and read it. I said, no, I speak, I speak, I don't write most of my things. I speak from my, my mind, and I speak what is truth, my truth. So if you have anything otherwise, let me know. But I'm going to continue to do my best for these kids. The reason is this, I owe it to this school district. Three of my kids graduated from this school district, and I'm very proud of who they are today. And that is why I vow that I'm going to do my best to give back. And I'm going to continue to do, to. And I'm going to continue to do, to, to give back. My truth, I mean, truth is what I'm going to run with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. As Mr. Zink said, there's a lot to unpack from this meeting and I. Feel the need to clarify just a couple of points that have come up in emails and that kind of thing and also in the meeting tonight. We do believe in the First Amendment. We do believe in the right of our community to be able to speak at the mic. We do put guidelines around it as we're allowed to because we're a limited public forum to do so. And again, individual board members and the board itself is not protected from defamation or consequences for that First Amendment speech should we choose to go there. All members of this board have a right to speak. They are again in their capacity not protected from defamation or consequences of their speech. And please do not assume that because we believe that all board members have a right to speak. But that means that the rest of the board agrees with those opinions. There are no quiet board members up here. Everyone will tell you if they agree or disagree. So please don't assume any agreement regardless of what the opinion is unless you actually hear it from the individual board members. Legal fees for the district were brought up. Uh, by one member of the uh, the community that was speaking. Going to give you just a couple of examples. We are required by law to respond to public records request. And it used to be that the district got fifteen to twenty public records requests a year. We are now, I believe. Halfway through the school or six months into the school year and we've gotten almost two hundred public records request. We don't have a choice about responding to that. That is required by law. And it does require the review of an attorney to make sure that we're responding within compliance with that law. Those are additional legal fees. We have had policies challenged this year. We've settled those, for the most part, we've settled those issues because that requires. Less legal fees for us than if we were to go into a full court press on that. There are a lot of reasons why those legal fees are up when there are allegations made against. An individual, we have to investigate those allegations. We have to make sure that we've done our due diligence on those allegations. Additional legal fees. I don't believe there's any board member up here who enjoys spending legal fees. As I would much rather have our taxpayer dollars going directly to helping our students. But we have to address legal issues when they're brought to our attention and we have to do that in compliance with the law. This has been a challenging year, going all the way back to January of last year. That has required much greater legal counsel than we've ever had to do before. So yes, our legal fees are up for good reason. We need to be in compliance with the law. Mr. Miller was brought up several times this evening and I'm, I'm going to, we've all heard this many, many, many times, but I'm going to very briefly say again. Allegations were brought forward, the Butler County Sheriff's Department investigated. The Butler County Prosecutor's Office investigated. Out of an abundance of due diligence, this board did an independent investigation. Which included a full forensic evaluation, including all devices, personal and work and iCloud storage. And on top of that, we did a fitness for duty evaluation. There was not support for the allegations. Regardless of what you hear at the microphone, that is what the board had to go on. We have to work on data and facts and evidence. That's what we had available to us. And we took all the steps that we know that we should take. Even went beyond what perhaps other organizations might do to make sure that we did what we were supposed to do. Mrs. Schaefer, I'm going to disagree with you only on one thing that you said about um, our mission statement. You said we were providing a future-ready experience. I think we still are. And I think you're completely right about the distractions, the distractions that Mr. D talked about. Mrs. Casper talked about. We have to get back to the work that we're supposed to be doing and that's our core competency, educating our students to the best of our ability. We have work to do. I want to see a shining report card. That's what I wanted for my own kids. It's what I want for all of your kids. When they're coming home, I want our district report card to reflect what we expect as parents for our own children. I'm saddened that our focus is on our differences. And what tears us apart and we heard it tonight. And we heard it in the audience. We heard it across the entire spectrum of our community that's here tonight. We didn't focus on what we can gather around together and that's educating our kids. That's the kind of discussion I would like us to be having as a community. I'm disappointed that. Respect and basic courtesy, those are basic attributes that we, I think, expect as parents for our students to have, for our children to have. We're not exhibiting in this boardroom. And we're not exhibiting it across this board. And there's no excuse for that, folks. We can do better and we need to do better. We have kids in our room. We have kids that watch these meetings. We have kids whose parents are discussing these meetings in their homes. And we're not setting a good example and we need to do better. I do want to clarify that those that come to the microphone, the school board is a topic that can be discussed. None of us up here are immune to comments that are hurtful, to disrespectful comments. To things that denigrate our character or our faith or our beliefs are many, many, many years of service to this community. Nobody's immune to that hurtful comment. But we have to allow it. And I would hope that those that listen take the time to say, consider the source. And consider if that's really somebody I'm going to believe what they have to say about somebody. It's disappointing and it's painful to see in our community as somebody said earlier. On a final note, I hope that we can change the tenor of our meetings, the tenor of our public comments, the tenor of our work together. And I hope that we will make a dedication to do that on behalf of our kids. We have work to do. Let's focus on the real work and not on our differences. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Let's conclude.
Thank you. Please call it a roll.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes, thank you all for coming.